Still a little windy, though, huh?
Yeah. It was gusting up about twenty minutes, twenty miles an hour. So are we live yet? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Is, uh, is, um, Tuesday, May twelfth, two thousand twenty, regular selectmen's meeting. Is, um, all of the selectmen are here, except for Mark Pendergast. Uh, we also have Steve Eldridge and Patty Murray. Is, uh, Steve, please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is, uh, before we get going on our official meeting here, I just want to say a few words about what's going on. Um, we have so far been pretty fortunate here in Burwick. Uh, we do know that we have had some COVID cases in, in town. Is, uh, because of the, uh, healthcare regulations, we don't know exactly who or where or what. Um, is Maine has been releasing their numbers by the county. But New Hampshire does it by the city. And, uh, we have been very fortunate, but when I looked at the numbers for New Hampshire, is Dover has between forty and fifty active cases. Somersworth has between twenty and thirty active cases. And Rochester has between twenty and thirty active cases. So that means that, you know, we can probably be guaranteed that in Brook, we have somewhere between twenty, ten and twenty, no, active cases. And, um, is unfortunately, just before Terry and I came down here, we got word from a friend of ours that, from Broick, that she had just brought her husband to the hospital with a temperature of a hundred and three degrees. And, uh, she was waiting in the parking lot, wondering if she was ever going to see him again alive. So this is very real. Is luckily, we've been able to, you know, flatten things out. And we haven't had the big surge that everybody's been afraid of, but I don't think it's time to really start letting that guard down yet. So, yeah. From there, I'll go on to approval of, uh, meeting minutes from April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, we have a motion by Ken, second by Noah, as I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero Patty.
Thank you.
I don't believe we had any emails or calls for public comments, did we Patty?
Nothing so far.
All right. Um, we have no public hearing, is we have no reports of committees, is, is actually, we might as well go right down to the town manager's report.
Okay, I'll just say on department reports, everybody's healthy and, um, and working. Um, so that's, that's a real positive. Nobody from police or fire who was out on the forefront. Uh, they're doing a great job and they're healthy. Um, town manager report, um, I met at the fire station this morning, we signed some documents for, uh, motorola equipment that's moving into the new station. It's on order, along with all the IT, uh, signatures for equipment that's being put in place there. Um, the building is almost entirely enclosed, except for the overhead doors. They should be pouring the concrete for the radiant heat flooring this week. And we expect, and the, uh, brick on the outside is going up. If you haven't seen it, it's really taking shape. So I would expect by next week, they're probably going to be inside and start doing some of the wiring and things like that. So it's moving right along the, um, the date of move-in, they expect to be September, which is on schedule. I think cost-wise, we're, uh, close to being on budget. Uh, I think we will be by the time we get into the building. Uh, James and I met with Great Falls Construction, uh, in Zoom meeting this morning, discussing, uh, the TIF and a credit enhancement agreement. Uh, they had a lot of questions and as did we. Um, and so we're both going to be going back to the drawing board and coming up with some realistic numbers of, uh, what we think we need and what they think they need. And we'll get back at it. We have plenty of time. Um, I know they've been, uh, soliciting, uh, uh, bids or, uh, job opportunities for, uh, local contractors, which is really nice to see. Uh, for excavation work and some carpentry work. It looks like, uh, they were in the L-shaped building closest to the town office, one of the panels was down, so they must have been in looking at that. Um, and we heard mentioned today that they might be looking at demolition of the old office building and possibly the L and just keeping the concrete building and along with the other one. So we talked a little bit about widening sidewalks and things like that. Uh, having the utilities buried and how we're going to pay for that through TIF funding. So this is starting to take shape, which is really, really positive. Um, otherwise, uh, that's all we have. At this point, we confirmed our bid for, uh, uh, Libby Scott, and he got back to me today and I told him yes to wait till July fourteenth and make sure we have the money in the bank before we, uh, start doing that. So, um, but we have plenty of time. Um, we are looking at a June first opening. I think I kept you up to date on that. Uh, staff and I are meeting tomorrow, uh, or Thursday to just go through how we're going to, uh, time-wise and how we're going to spread people out. Uh, the police department, uh, spoke with Patty today and they're going to have somebody, uh, on the outside, making sure that if we need it, we have people, uh, not entering the building until the proper time. We're looking at four to six people at a time inside. So Patty's done a great job in organizing the downstairs and how it's going to work. And we'll see how it all comes together. But we're, uh, closing off, uh, the bathrooms to the public and access to the second and third floor. Um, try to, and we're going to supply some masks for people if they don't have them. You really want to enforce that people wear masks when they come in. So I think everybody in the public has been pretty indoctrinated into how it works with grocery stores and things like that. So I don't think it will be an issue, but hopefully people play by the rules. Keep everybody safe. Otherwise, that's all I have at this time. Any questions?
Any question, any questions of Steve? Is, uh, Steve, I, is, uh, when we talked earlier, you had mentioned something about, uh, Great Falls also being, looking at the duplex over on School Street?
Yeah, they, they've been looking at the duplex. Um, they don't think it needs a lot of work to empty it out, cleaned up, a little bit sprucing inside. Some of the decking needs to be replaced. Um, they are inquiring with the local person if they might be interested in purchasing it. They don't see it as a opportunity for commercial or retail outlet at this point in time. But they're really have their feelers out locally to what we can do. And, uh, it's nice to hear. And know we picked the right contractor or developer because they want to make sure that things are done right for Burwick, not just them. So it's, uh, but that's where that is. I'm not sure who they're talking to yet, but.
Um, I, I just want to talk about, a little bit about the opening up. And, uh, I, I spent a lot, several hours at the transfer station today. And, uh, you know, most people understood that, you know, we've been doing what we needed to do to keep people safe. Is, uh, a lot of people are saying that it's, it's nice to have a tax break because they're not having to register their cars. But I told them they'll have to come in sooner or later. Is, uh, um, is, you know, talking about opening up parks and trails and things like that. As I, I know that there was a bit of a controversy about the, uh, the, uh, well, the, the boat where it launched the area up off of Hatfield Pond. Um, and we have a sign up that says, you know, it's closed. I went up there and a couple of different times on different weekends. And it was packed. There were, there were ten to twenty cars in there. But most of the people were on the water. They weren't hanging out on the, on the shore. And the people that were on the shore were either getting things into their cars or into their boats and keeping their distance. So, you know, people have been, you know, behaving themselves and, uh, you know, doing what we need to do in order to do this. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask you, Steve, is about the kayak launch. I know the, the road crew helped take it out last year. Is, uh, do you, have you talked to anybody, to Dennis Dupree or anybody about that?
I haven't talked to Dennis. I've kind of seen him go by and wave and say, how, how's it going? But I haven't spoken to him about that. I have spoken to a number of people who asked about it, some upset, some not so upset. And as I told them, I said, if you want to pull in and there's nobody there, you just have to use your common sense. We just don't want large groups of people congregating. And, and if you can get into the water there and nobody's around, have at it. That's my biggest concern is nobody congregates.
Yeah. And, and similar to what happened, what I saw up at Hatfields, is people come, they unload their kayaks and canoes, they get in the water and then they disperse. So I, I don't see a big problem with that. So, um, I'll, I'll talk to Dennis this week and, uh, see what we need to do. Because he, he's the one that knows how it all goes together, really. So, yeah, more of us have to learn about that.
And we can certainly help him when he's ready to get that in.
Yeah, we can also post signage as well, just to make sure that people are, are, you know, being mindful about the situation still. Because sometimes they can be forgetful, you know, just because of daily activities and they're focused on what they're doing. But if, if we can post it, just like everybody else is doing, I mean, I, I think it's a simple awareness that keeps it in the forefront of their mind.
I agree. You have a lot of the town, local town offices opening up next Monday. And, um, on the eighteenth, and some have already opened up this Monday. And staff and I talked a lot about it and watching what the numbers were in Maine. We thought we'd like to wait a couple of weeks longer to see how it plays out. I think people are jumping in into the water too quickly. So we'll, we'll see how it plays out. But we will hopefully be open June first.
And when I was at the transfer station, you know, people were mindful of what was going on. Is they kept their distance and probably about fifty percent of the people had masks on while they were there. Is, um, I'm happy to say that all of our staff were masked. And, uh, no, they're very, they're very conscious about, you know, getting too close to people and, and helping them out and stuff. So I, I think, I think that, you know, common sense has prevailed a lot of times. And that's one of the reasons we need to, you know, really take this in a controlled, measured way, open them back up. And, you know, I really appreciate Patty and the staff, you know, working with us and doing what we need to do to make sure this is done properly.
Yep. It's been good.
Any other questions or comments for Steve? All right. Um, is I have no communications. Is I will go through the account payable. Is Patty had emailed them out to everybody beforehand. We have a payroll warrant, zero two four four, from April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, for the amount of fifty-six thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. We have a account payable warrant, two zero four six, from May fourteenth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of one million, five hundred thirty-seven thousand, one hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty-five cents. And we have a payroll warrant, two zero four six, from May fourteenth, two thousand twenty, for the amount of fifty-nine thousand, three hundred forty dollars and fifty-six cents. As I will, um, make a motion to pay our bills.
Second.
Any questions? If not, I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself is yes, five zero Patty, not four zero Patty, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, that brings us to the new business. Is, uh, Steve and Lisa Vargas and Lisa Huesis and Patty and myself have been talking about what we could do to, uh, adjust our, uh, budget. Is, uh, taking into account that we expect the decrease in our revenues. And so is, I'll let Steve explain where we're going with this.
Yep, um, we had originally, uh, budgeted, uh, uh, six hundred thousand in the revenue sharing. Uh, we budgeted this past year, five fifty. Uh, it looked like we were going to exceed that five fifty and possibly even six hundred thousand. Questioning that now because last April, revenue sharing came in less than what we expected. But I think we'll meet our budget. Uh, the same with excise tax. Um, we expect that to decrease. Uh, we had, uh, uh, originally budgeted this year, one million, four hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and we're on track to, to meet that and then some. I redid, I think my goal is, is to, uh, cut back, not to expect the revenue to continue to grow like we usually have. So I've reduced it, the, uh, excise tax by fifty thousand and the revenue sharing by a hundred thousand. And still cross my fingers that we'll, we'll meet those. Um, in order to, uh, somewhat control the tax rate, the, what I know of it coming, we don't know for sure at this point. We're working with Paul and Karen to get some estimates. Uh, but, uh, I took out the road funding, six hundred thousand. Uh, and I put that into, um, you still going to get paid, but the money's not going to come from raising taxes. It's going to come from our undesignated fund balance. We're allowed to spend money above and beyond a one twelve point five percent of the operating budget, which includes the school. So we'll have that and we have another one point two million that we could spend on capital projects because we've done, we have good fund balance. But I think it's prudent to utilize that, uh, to get some of our projects done and not raise taxes on using that funding. So that's my goal. We're still going to see a tax increase, but not anywhere near. Um, what would have happened if we didn't back some of this out? So, and I think this year we'll see, um, some money coming in. Looks like we're going to exceed our revenue and, and probably not spend everything we budgeted. So that will all fall back into surplus as well. So I think it leaves us in a fairly healthy position heading into the, you know, the next tax year. And, um, and we're still working on that, uh, hopefully that, um, people, uh, to work. Um, but that's, so in order to do that, um, a warrant that you had already approved and then approved, if you, if you do that, approve the new warrant, which takes out the six hundred thousand and you put it into using unassigned fund balance. And if you want a smaller, so. Any questions on that?
The, the other thing, though, that you hadn't mentioned, Steve, that I, I saw today when I got the paperwork is, uh, the article forty-one for the, uh, uh, elevator?
Yes.
Pulled that out?
I, I did pull that out, yes. Um, at this point in time, we've done without an elevator. We, the chairlift works most of the time for now. Um, James and I, I, I think we get, just because of the situation we're in, we should not be spending, putting money aside for that at this time. We can do that next year if things improve. Uh, I think it's just trying to be as conservative as I can to make sure we maintain our unassigned fund balance as high as we have right now and, and not be concerned about the ADA stuff. We, people can get into the building, people can use the chairlift if they have to. And I think this year, you're going to see an awful lot of absentee ballots versus people coming to the door. And again, we can't even predict that. I know Patty's up in the air about what we're going to do when July fourteenth comes. And none of us know, including the governor, so. We'll see what plays out, but I, I did take that out this year. Um, and I thought that we could have done that, but, um, revenues are going to be down. And, and what's more important right now is to keep our road budget and our road projects moving forward and a few other areas.
That and, uh, I, I think that, you know, by delaying this for a year, it gives us a chance to look at more grants and funding that way. You know, that way we can, uh, see if we can't offset it, you know, ahead of time. And we maybe not have to, you know, spend as much. If we could get a grant, as we, you know, typically when we get grants, we have to do a twenty percent of the matching. So twenty percent is a lot better than a hundred percent.
Yes, it is. Right. James, James has been working diligently on a lot of grant stuff. I keep sending it to him. Uh, information and make sure I haven't overwhelmed him. And he says I haven't yet. So, um, he's, he's doing due diligence to try to find pots of money that we can do that with. And when we're at.
I kind of lost Steve there, but, um, Patty, on the, uh, on the, uh, warrant is, do we have to rescind the whole warrant? And then do we have to vote on every article again?
No, 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 just rescind your original vote. And then you can go to accept the warrant as, um, presented tonight.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to indicate that forty-one has been removed? Are we going to put something in there?
Yes, I would just indicate, Tom, if you could read Article twenty-eight.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go through.
Old and new, Article twenty-nine's being deleted, so read that as a deletion and forty-one is being deleted.
Right. So, um, yeah, the Article twenty-eight is, uh, originally called for, you know, four hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance. And, uh, Steve boosted that up to the six hundred thousand. And that was Article twenty-eight. And then on Article twenty-nine, we're, uh, going to, we want to delete. And that was the article that we voted to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for its use for the road and bridges and construction, you know? And so since Steve wants to, uh, take it out of the unassigned fund balance, we don't have to, you know, vote to, uh, raise that money. And then Article forty-one. Article forty-one was, um, shall the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for, you know, to pay towards the, uh, elevator? And, uh, we're looking at deleting that article totally. And, uh, so those are, those are the changes that I have in front of me. Is, um, so Article twenty-eight would be changed from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand from the unassigned fund balance. Article twenty-nine would be deleted. That would be the, uh, raising the three hundred thousand dollars. And then Article forty-one would be deleted. And that would have been to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance for the, um, elevator. So, um, so first we have to rescind our vote, Patty, is that it?
Yes.
Is, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved. Or who made, who made the motion? Do we remember?
Um, I can look, hang on.
Probably you, Ed.
Yeah, may, maybe. I can't remember.
Yeah, it was a month or so ago.
Oh goodness, um.
That was what, the twenty-four?
Same time, I think the motion was for each individual article.
Right.
I don't think, I don't think we did a motion for the entire thing.
Hmm.
All right, hold on. It should be quick, but it's not. I'm sorry.
Yeah, as, as Ken said, I think, no, at the time, we just voted on every article. Individual, we never voted on the warrant as.
Right, you didn't accept the entire warrant. So I would say I just need a vote from, from Ed. Ed, you motioned.
Yeah.
So just a second would cover it. You were all present at the individual vote.
All right.
Thanks, Ken.
We have Ken for a second. I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So then we need to vote for the amended. When is that it, Patty?
Yes.
So we need, we need.
That one, Article twenty-eight. Which will be.
And also for the deletions.
Right.
A move, we accept the amended, uh, warrant as, as presented.
Second.
Is, uh, that suffice, Patty?
Yes, thank you. And then also, um, can you just vote on the Article twenty-eight newly written? So I can get that count for the ballot.
Oh, okay, I, I understand. So, um, yes, we need, we need a, a motion for, uh, the change in Article twenty-eight, Patty is saying, so is.
So you just account of how many yes votes to accept that article to read six hundred thousand.
So, is, um, so should we, uh, table that other motion, Patty, or should we?
What motion?
Well, Ed made a motion to accept.
So that covers the two deleted ones and the new one. But for the ballot, I need the selectman recommendation to be printed on the ballot. So, um, it was recommended, yes, vote five to nothing, but now there's only four of you. So I just need to know of the four, how many say yes to the new warrant, Article number twenty-eight?
We don't need a motion for that, correct?
No, just a show of hands.
I'll go, I'll go through, I'll go through the roll for Article twenty-eight for the change in that first. Is Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So four zero Patty.
Perfect.
So now we can take up Ed's motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt that, but yes.
No problem. Is that we can, we can, uh, move forward with Ed's motion to accept the warrant as presented.
Yes.
We have a motion in a second. Is, I'll go through the roll. Ed?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Four zero Patty, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes care of both those items. Um, we have no quick claims, we have no abatements, we have no second public comment, no executive session, other business and non-agenda items. Does anybody have anything else to bring up?
No.
Is, um, Steve, you have.
Patty, do you need us to come in tomorrow and, uh, sign those?
Yes, I need two people.
All right, I'll be in in the morning.
Thank you.
I can stop in tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And, and she also has the, uh, warrant for the school board, the school budget here. And that, that's twenty signatures.
Yeah.
So is, uh, is, uh, you'll be here for a little bit.
There's, uh, there's a question I had, real quick, Tom. Uh, James, we got something from Civil Consultants who's doing some of the work for the school board in Hussey School. Does anybody want to sit in on a Zoom meeting on that with them and some of the school people? James and I are going to sit in on it. I can let you know what day it is and time, if you're interested.
I'll sit in on it.
Okay.
Yeah, just let me know whenever it is.
Yeah. I'm all set.
You're going to sit in on it?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
You can send me the information, Steve. Uh, I don't know whether I will or not, but.
Okay, I'll send it to you. Send it to everybody. Yep, thank you.
Is, um, um, before we end, I, I just, again, I want to thank every, all the employees in the town. Though they've been, uh, really good, is they're taking care of the people. Is, uh, I heard a lot of people at the transfer station today, you know, talking about what's going on in town and they understand what's going on. And they said every time they needed to call the town hall, they've had a response, Patty. So is, I just want to, you know, pass that along, let everybody know that, you know, everybody appreciates what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say yes.
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 All right, thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
See you soon.